Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, second on that agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose we have an agenda. If one of you have that open, if you'd like to take that item.
Go ahead, Mr. Morrissey.
I don't have it open.
You don't have it open?
Okay.
Okay.
Request, I'm sorry. This is a motion request by Rebel Sheffield to purchase two vacant lot, vacant parcels firmly known as 408 and 414 Fowler Street in the amount of a dollar per lot for the purpose of building a detached garage with a development agreement.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on that item. Do we have a presentation? Or is it not necessarily? Or are we just open for conversation? The applicant is not here, I take it?
No, he wasn't there.
Okay. Do we want to start with questions, or would we like to have a...
Yeah. These two lots, why aren't you combining them and selling them to build a house on them? You can't build on one, but to put the two together. And I think there's three lots that's there, right?
Yeah, we're simply responding to a citizen who submitted an application to purchase and then we brought it to you guys for a recommendation.
So did you consider combining the two lots and putting a house on it instead?
Like, who putting a house on it?
Pardon me?
I don't know who would put a house on it.
Because?
No, I mean, we have no plan to build a house. I mean, they're available, these, these lots, all of our lots have been made available to like Hawkeye and it's just not a lot that's been chosen to be built on.
The single lots are not buildable lots, but if you combine the two, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be large enough to build a house on?
Correct. You can even build on the single lots if you want. There are lots of records, it'd be legal.
Right.
What's the applicant's address, Chris?
They're at 418 Fowler, which is right next door. If you look at the map on the last page.
Well, counsel, this spring, we had a similar situation where someone wanted to build a garage on a lot. He offered it for a dollar. We turned him down. He paid the appraised value of the lot. Now, you're going to try and do the same thing again. The person that paid for that, paid $3,000 for that lot is going to come back and say, wait a minute. Why aren't you making this person pay the full price?
Are we dealing with the exact same facts? Can somebody refresh my memory?
I think Noel.
Noel Anderson, Committee Plan Development Director. That's loud. Are you talking about Reed Street?
Yes.
So on Reed Street, they were not willing to commit to sign a development agreement to build a garage. So according to the sale of property policy, since they were not willing to, to commit to actually building something to create more taxable value, they had to buy it for the assessed value. We did just sell one on University Avenue where they're going to build a garage for $1. We've got both cases here. And again, we're just looking at, this is a citizen request. We have a number of lots. With the addition of the garage, they would be improving the neighborhood. They would be creating more taxable value. And again, we have a lot of lots. We'd like to see positive development going back into these infill neighborhoods.
Years ago, John Kincaid was the councilperson in his ward for, I remember a lady paid full price for a lot, or paid the appraised price for the lot. A few weeks later, we had a similar situation where somebody offered a dollar for a lot and the council was so anxious to get rid of the, the lot that they accepted the dollar. Well, the lady who paid the appraised value for her lot backed out of her deal. If you're going to sell somebody else for a dollar, why would I pay full price, appraised price? And so now we're doing it again. I, I won't go along with this.
Ms...
Yes, sir.
Well, Noel, doesn't this meet the sale of property policy?
Yes, it does, with the, with the requirement that they build a garage on it.
Right, with the development agreement.
Correct.
So how many years is it going to take to get that value back in taxes with a garage? I thought it was like eight years.
Yeah, we, we base the amount of taxes generated over eight years. And if you look in the transmittal, one, the one lot's only worth 900, assessed at 960. Another one is assessed at 1,050. So I think it'd be pretty close, we get that money back in eight years.
That doesn't sound like...
On a $23,000 garage.
That doesn't sound like the numbers that I saw.
While you're looking at that. So, going back to Mr. Welper's original question, we're not, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're talking about this in Reed Street, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right, yes. The sale on University Avenue and the sale here, both agreed to do a development agreement and build a garage and they're both around $25,000 each.
And then, just out of curiosity, and I guess as much for the audience as anybody, why, why do they want both lots? Why don't they just take the 414 if all they're going to do is build a garage? Just out of curiosity.
Well, the garage is fairly good size and they wanted some room on the, it'd be 24 by 35. So they wanted a little bit of room on the sides. And they want to fence the property in, as they have lots of individuals who are crossing through the property that leave a trail of litter and other things.
So to do what they want to do, or what they're proposing to do, they need both lots?
Yes, and it's, it's for the garage and security. They want to fence it all off, that's the plan, fence it off and to stop the traffic cutting through.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Also, Chris and Noel, isn't the city currently responsible for taking care of this property, including sidewalks?
Yes, we're doing mowing for three lots in that area as well as the sidewalks along all three lots during the winter.
So this, not only is the development agreement that will add taxes, but it takes away from some money that we have to pay for maintenance of that property?
Yeah, I have an estimate of about, I think it was about 18 to $2,000 per lot to mow all summer long and do snow removal.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
I, I was just going to say, I, when I was looking at the dollar amount, I apparently got the, the square feet as the value of the property, not the size of the property. I didn't see it was 1,000, I thought it was $6,000 for the, okay. My mistake.
You feel better now?
Oh, I feel much better now.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, comments?
Can I tell everybody how I feel?
Yes.
No. You're not part of the committee, I don't care. Well, we have no other questions or comments. We have a motion on the table. All in favor, signify, and this will be bringing it to the council. Correct? Kelly? Approval here would bring it to the council.
I think this just approves it. I don't believe they go to council.
Doesn't have to go to council?
No.
I think it does, yeah.
My mistake, we do go to council at that.
Red letter day. Okay. A motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Okay. Motion's approved.
We should adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned, thank you.
Yeah, I hope that's right. I hope...
The feds, grants and such. I don't want to be spending forfeiture money if we can get it from elsewhere.
True.
Okay, don't. Thank you.
Okay, back to the bills payment. You're welcome. The bills payment this week, three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents. That's three, comma, two-two-seven, comma, seven-seven-six-point-three-six.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the bills payment. Any questions in any of those items? Hearing not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bills are paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The realtors, or the realtors, the landlords like to move plans for yard waste. Do they like that yard waste plan?
Council meeting, your city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
All right, we have a full council tonight. First up, we have a moment of silence. You can stand or sit. It is your choice. And afterwards, Keith Caspary will lead us in the pledge. So join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you.
Keith.
Would you please join me in our nation's pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here we go.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of September eighteen, twenty-seventeen, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
You did the minutes two this time, right?
Pardon me?
You did the minutes two this time, right? It's not so fast this time.
All right, first I'd like to call up Dan Van Nie. Yeah, Dan? Come on up, sir.
Welcome, welcome. Come have some fun with us tonight.
All right, so this evening, we have the special honor of recognizing Dan for being in our Waste Management Service as a waste water operator for over thirty years. And let me read the plaque. It said, "Presented to Dan Van Nie in appreciation of thirty years of valuable and dedicated service to the city of Waterloo, Iowa, this September twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen." So, Dan, we thank you for your dedication, your commitment to the city of Waterloo, for being an example for other employees as well. And it's quite an honorable thing to be in one place thirty years, but to do it so well also. So, Dan, do you have any comments for us?
No, I don't.
Short and sweet.
Just let me do my job.
All right, well, we thank you so much, Dan, and congratulations, sir. All right, thank you. Now it's time for oral presentations. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council? Let us know your name, your address, and your thoughts.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I was just going to give you an update on the question I asked last week. How come we can't use Hawkeye students for the electrical and the plumbing that the Hawkeye is going to build the houses on the backfield lots? And we can use the students. We can't use the students that are accredited students. We can use the students that are non-accredited students, which are in Cedar Falls. Now, I still ain't understood that one, but that's the answer I got. We can use the non-accredited students, but we can't use accredited students. So, they can use some of the students for the plumbing and electrical. I'm just bringing you updated on that.
Because we had an answer for you, and it was similar to the same one, but beat us to it tonight. So, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment to the council?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm back.
All right, welcome back.
First of all, Kizer, Waterloo. I'm a member of the Mayor's Council for the ADA Compliance Commission. I feel that we need to expand that commission a little bit further, please. We need to have a member of the commission appointed to be a liaison to work with the Building Inspections Department, because there's too much, the same thing going on from when I first started. Case in point, on Sycamore and Park, downtown East Side, Waterloo, on the north, northeast corner of the intersection there, about two to three, two or three years, I'm not sure exactly, don't quote me exactly on the time date, but it was about two and a half, three years ago, they replaced a whole intersection there, the whole curb for the north, northeast curb. And Mayor Buck Clark at that time assured me that that would be, the replacement would be better than it was before they tore it up. That's not the case. It's even worse than it was before, as far as accessibility for curb cuts and access for people in wheelchairs, canes, walkers, and whatnot. So, my beef right now is that I would like to have, I'm on turn to be appointed to work with the planning, the inspection, building, street department committees, inspectors, to have them, have me be there when they actually pour the concrete, make some of the work to make sure it's ADA compliant, please. So, it's done, so it's one and done, basically. So, it's not, it doesn't have to be done over and over again at taxpayer expense and hassle for people with disabilities and actually use the curb cuts.
So, there is a process, and we won't circumvent the process for an appointment.
Well, I already spoke with yours, I already spoke with Joyce downstairs, and I picked up a form, application form to be appointed by the council.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you. Here tonight to let you know I'm back in shape again, and you can't get rid of me that easy.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council?
Daryl, Daryl Thomas, two-hundred Birch Avenue. Good evening, Mayor. A question I posed approximately twelve or fourteen weeks ago was that, in the commission of a crime here within the city limits, of course, is it, is it impossible for the, for the city to, pardon? I thought someone said, I'm sorry, I thought someone said. Is it possible for the, for the city to impound that car and sell it for, for cost?
So, ask me your question again?
In, in the city, in the commission of a crime here in the city, if a car is used to transport and then goes to and from that scene, why is it, why is it, is it hard to impound that car?
So, cars that are involved in criminal situations, can you impound that car?
Yes.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
I believe in some situations, we do.
Is that, is that situation dependent upon?
The crime.
The crime and?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Sorry, I missed you guys last week. I was fishing. I'm here again, though. I have three things that I want to make statements on. Tyson, I saw in the paper that this is not in a TIF.
An agenda-related item that'll be on the agenda as, what number is it?
Number nine.
It's number nine. So, you can comment it on number nine if it's related to Tyson's.
Okay, I'll wait for number nine.
I'll call you first.
Well, thank you, sir.
We can work it out.
Sullivan Center. I understand that TIF is being extended, provided the money, providing the money for the agreement. How much money is in the present TIF that is being extended? And how much more projects are projected for this possible funding crunch? Because if we have to extend the TIF for that, well, we already have projects that are designated for the downtown TIF. Then, where's that money coming from? Also, understand that code enforcement was out picking up signs today on political signs in violation today. There's one across the street from my house that hasn't been picked up. Actually, two in the same yard. Seems funny that they can find time for that, but can't find time to take care of the other violations of the code that they are identified in, you know, cars and vehicles that are sitting on properties, et cetera, but they can find time for a political situation? That seems a little strange to me. Thank you, sir.
It's their time of year again.
I understand that, but they don't do it the rest of the year? When there's other violations they don't take care of? Thank you.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. As I watched KWWL News the other day about the opening of their new building, or remodeled building, it is very impressive. It is very wonderful. Tax dollars at work. Also, and just before that, there was a plea from the veterans that are short money on their building that had to move to make room for KWWL. I feel that the city of Waterloo and KWWL ought to work together on a fund drive to help those folks, because they were gracious enough to move. For whatever reason, they're short on money. Part of it is the roof, which they are being held to some very strict standards, because they are in this downtown historical neighborhood. I feel like the city ought to make an exception. We've got a bank just out their back door that has a steel roof. We've got a bank across the street that has a steel roof. I think a steel roof should be appropriate, thus requiring less funding. And I know that, that you can flex these building standards, because the building on Fifth Street that we rent has never had a permit and has siding on it that is not appropriate for the downtown area or any other area of Waterloo. I feel like we ought to take better care of these veterans, and that's a way we can do it, is change the ruling and let them put on a nice steel roof and finish their building. For whatever reason, they're short on money, and we ought to take care of them, folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Forrest.
Thank you, Forrest.
John Sherbin, seventeen fifteen Robin Road. I know we've been up here several times about the Ainsborough traffic stoplights and miscellaneous, but I sat, I sat in Burger King the other night and watched the Downing-Ainsborough light go from red to green to red to green. It does it twenty-four-seven. The traffic pattern there, there's about two times a day when the school lets out or when it's going in, that the traffic is fairly heavy and the light is pretty nifty. It does not need to be stop traffic on Ainsborough twice. You either can go north or south, but you can't do both. So, the light changes, stops the traffic on the other side of the street. There's nobody on Downing. There's no cars at night on Downing that can't make it across or whatever. Some reason, we quit doing the flashing lights years ago. Cedar Falls does. Evidently, they picked up something. But if we have, and the five thousand dollars that we spent to have that studied stated that that light was not good, that it's, that we were right, that the light shouldn't be there as it was. It's been re-timed a little bit, but it's still, when you turn the corner on Blackhawk, go down to Downing, you stop, and you catch the light down there on University and you stop. Or you have an option now. If you turn there on, off Ainsborough, right on Downing to the right, go one block and go down left, you can beat everybody by a mile if you go around that. And I don't think the citizens really like to have that much traffic running down there. So, I don't know, maybe some, it just looks to me like something should be done. At least go so it's red and green, you know? You can go across, both sides can go the deal, put an arrow in or something. This way, you're guaranteed to stop. This is one of the busiest streets in Waterloo, and it's just not, it's just not the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to share their thoughts with the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's item one, A through B three, and within that are the bills payment. Bills payment this week are three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents. That's three, comma, two-two-seven, comma, seven-seven-six-point-three-six.
All right, the motion's been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, Waterloo Boathouse enhancements, contract number nine-four-zero.
Second.
Remind you, gentlemen, to speak into the microphone, so Mr. Chapman will have to make one last call tomorrow. But that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, were there any comments on file?
There were no comments on file.
Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Someone take four, five, and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number four, resolution approving use agreement with Cedar Valley Tech Works for event parking and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents on behalf of the city of Waterloo. Number five, a resolution approving acceptance of Blackhawk County Gaming Association grant an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars with sixty thousand dollars in city match and a five thousand dollar donation from the Cedar Rapids Colonels Foundation to perform Waterloo youth diamond improvements. And number six, a resolution approving request of Wilbur Auto Body and Sales for an appeal to section two-seventy-three of the two thousand and three Traffic Code adopted by ordinance forty-six oh-two, appealing the requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on city-owned right-of-way located between the street and property line to allow parking spaces in the right-of-way of West Ninth Street adjacent to two-twelve West Ninth Street.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council discussion or questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file, file and instruct City Clerk to read bids.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was sixty-six thousand dollars. We had, our first bid was from Wilson, or excuse me, Shaffer Tree Service of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. The next bid came from Wilson Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. Our final bid came from Iowa Tree Services LLC of Denver, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lind?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution other wording, the twenty-seventeen fall stump removal project bid to Wilson Custom Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents, and approving contract bond and certificate of insurance, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. So, roll call?
Yep.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Someone take four, five, and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number four, resolution approving use agreement with Cedar Valley Tech Works for event parking and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents on behalf of the city of Waterloo. Number five, a resolution approving acceptance of Blackhawk County Gaming Association grant an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars with sixty thousand dollars in city match and a five thousand dollar donation from the Cedar Rapids Colonels Foundation to perform Waterloo youth diamond improvements. And number six, a resolution approving request of Wilbur Auto Body and Sales for an appeal to section two-seventy-three of the two thousand and three Traffic Code adopted by ordinance forty-six oh-two, appealing the requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on city-owned right-of-way located between the street and property line to allow parking spaces in the right-of-way of West Ninth Street adjacent to two-twelve West Ninth Street.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council discussion or questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Seven and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a request by CGA engineers on behalf of DCS Properties LLC and GAC Real Estate LLC for the preliminary plot of Village West second edition, a three-lot commercial subdivision located at the northeast corner of Highway sixty-three and West Ridgeway Avenue. Number eight is a resolution approving the assignment of rebates to Twin Trees LLC in conjunction with a development agreement with JSA Development LLC, originally approved on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen for the property located at four oh-two through four oh-four East Forest Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions on these two items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, only because somebody did ask anyway. Is, Noel, is Twin Trees LLC a local organization, a local company? And is, what is four oh-two and four oh-four? What is, what is, what it's in there right now? What's the business?
Mr. Anderson, you're up.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I will have to look that up for you. I don't remember exactly which building it is. It is a local, it is a local, it is the leasing of the building, so they have conveyed that to them and the rebate portion to them. And this is for financial record-keeping mainly for the assignment of rebates, but I can definitely get that information to you.
But that's the tenant of the?
Correct.
Whatever business that is.
Yes, I'll get that to you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a request by CGA engineers on behalf of DCS Properties LLC and GAC Real Estate LLC for the preliminary plot of Village West second edition, a three-lot commercial subdivision located at the northeast corner of Highway sixty-three and West Ridgeway Avenue. Number eight is a resolution approving the assignment of rebates to Twin Trees LLC in conjunction with a development agreement with JSA Development LLC, originally approved on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen for the property located at four oh-two through four oh-four East Forest Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions on these two items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, only because somebody did ask anyway. Is, Noel, is Twin Trees LLC a local organization, a local company? And is, what is four oh-two and four oh-four? What is, what is, what it's in there right now? What's the business?
Mr. Anderson, you're up.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I will have to look that up for you. I don't remember exactly which building it is. It is a local, it is a local, it is the leasing of the building, so they have conveyed that to them and the rebate portion to them. And this is for financial record-keeping mainly for the assignment of rebates, but I can definitely get that information to you.
But that's the tenant of the?
Correct.
Whatever business that is.
Yes, I'll get that to you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the request of Tyson Fresh Meats Incorporated for industrial property tax exemptions on the expansion for property located at five oh-one North Elk Run Road.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Anyone questions about this item?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. According to the article in the paper, this was not in a TIF. Then what department will the money come from for the match to cover the tax abatements offered?
All right, is that your only question? Good sir?
On that item, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
I will have to look that up for you. I don't remember exactly which building it is. It is a local, it is a local, it is the lesee of the building, so they have conveyed that to them and the rebate portion to them, and this is for financial record-keeping mainly for the assignment of rebates, but I can definitely get that information to you.
But that's the tenant of the?
Correct.
Whatever business that is.
Yes, I'll get that to you.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the request of Tyson Fresh Meats Incorporated for industrial property tax exemptions on the expansion for property located at five oh one North Elk Run Road.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone questions about this item?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. According to the article in the paper, this was not in a TIF. Then what department will the money come from for the match to cover the tax abatements offered?
All right, is that your only question? Good sir.
On that item, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So, this is a tax abatement program that is offered statewide. Blackhawk County approved it back in the nineteen eighties, I believe. So with a tax abatement versus a rebate, in a rebate, they actually pay the taxes and get a check back for us for that amount. For a tax abatement, the county assessor's office is actually the taxing entity, and so this added value will simply be abated from their property at the set schedule of the industrial property tax abatement, so they will pay less in taxes until they're up to full taxes after five years. There's no department paying them back the taxes for the match. They're simply getting an abatement program through the county program to pay less in taxes to serve as the match.
Mr. Mayor?
Somebody gets it in the butt. Excuse me for the French, but...
There you go. Your French is not excuse.
Mr. Mayor, Noel, is that abatement on the city's portion only, or is it for city, school, and county?
I believe it's the full amount.
It is, okay.
Yep.
And, and just, this is just a thought, somebody told me this today, it reminded me, when we, Apple kind of got the same deal on a much larger scale at Walke, and where there was state participation and city participation to make the state thing work, and Apple was going to give them a whole bunch of money to help the city build something. Would it, would it be appropriate if one of our staff talked to Tyson and sensed we're all being good citizens to help them out? They could help us out with some program, parks, recreation, sports plaques?
We can definitely look into that.
Something like that.
The Apple one was a development agreement through a TIF district, so there was more negotiations between, between the city that they went into Walke and the company.
How many jobs was that one?
I think it was fifty, fifty or seventy jobs for Apple.
We gave less and got more jobs.
Correct. But with this one, this one, we're merely approving the application.
They're a big company, big corporate company, they got a lot of money, maybe we could kind of convince them to help.
I know Tyson is a very good corporate citizen sponsoring a lot of activities in the city, so...
I think, I think, and they do participate in charitable, but I think you're meaning like if there's a children's park, that we may need some help getting some stuff there, participating in, something like that, maybe adding a name. So I understand the question, we will.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson? Isn't this really just kind of cleaning up a little odd situation out there as far as it's kind of cut out of the rest of the TIF district somewhat?
So we actually, when Tyson announced this to staff, we were looking at how to meet the state match for them to proceed with the project here in Iowa since we were competing with, I believe it was Nebraska and Indiana for the site. There was the option of expanding the TIF to include that in there to provide some kind of rebate or incentive program to match that required state match, or to go ahead with this industrial tax application. This is the process that Tyson thought was the fastest and the easiest for them to process through. You know, they have about five hundred and fifty thousand square feet out there now. This is a fifty thousand square foot expansion with about eighteen thousand square feet of renovation area, so it's probably going to be a smaller amount of actual increased taxable value, so they wanted to go through this process as the faster process, but also the easier one for them to keep track of in such a large site for the industrial tax abatement.
Aren't they currently, isn't Tyson's currently our second-largest employer?
Yes, they are.
Do you have a range of the jobs, of what they'll pay?
They're hiring two hundred and forty-five people. Two hundred and thirty-five of those are at seventeen thirty-nine starting, and then there's eight management positions that are starting at thirty-four eighty-eight. Actually, I think in the packet, then there's a couple of jobs in between there, but it also shows, I believe it's at eighteen months that they all get raises if they're still there at that time, so very good paying jobs, and they do offer benefit package.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to make any comments about overall the impact of this project?
Most of the things that I was going to say have already been covered by the questions.
Who are you again?
I'm sorry, I'm Steve Dust, CEO of the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber, but more generally, I think that Waterloo should be very proud of the process that you went through to attract this expansion. These are people who have plants all over the country, and this is not the only plant of its type in their system. It is by far the largest job generation that they've had in the state in quite some time, in many years, decades. And it shouldn't be lost that just because they're building distribution space with this investment, the other eighteen thousand square feet that Noel mentioned is being better equipped for new products. And just as we're all looking at the marketplace about what kind of new things our new customers going to demand, that's the same mold that Tyson is in, and they're making that kind of an investment here. So, very good for the Cedar Valley and Waterloo in specific, and we appreciate the cooperation in getting this accomplished.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Ten, eleven, and twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Whopper?
Number ten is a resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for C D B G and home program activities for the period of July first, two thousand and sixteen, through July thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number eleven is a resolution approving the annual financial report for the city's streets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, and authorizing transmittal to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Number twelve is a resolution approving the submission of grant application for the Iowa Clean Air Attainment Grant in the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand dollars to install a traffic adaptive system on Broadway Street from Park Road to Airport Boulevard, including a fiber optic interconnect, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion's been made with the second. Council questions on these three items or public? Mr. Mayor, can we have a little overview on item number twelve, please? Sandy?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. This is basically like the one you approved a couple weeks ago for Ainsborough. It will run fiber optic all along Broadway from Park Road out to Airport, which will connect all of our traffic signals, which will allow us also to put in, if they want police cameras, and it'll have our monitoring cameras and detection cameras. This is a benefit to upgrade the city, so if we're awarded this grant, then we can continue with fiber.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution rejecting the bid from Blackhawk Waste Disposal Company Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with providing a recycling processing facility for the city of Waterloo's curbside recycling program in the amount of sixty-five dollars per ton sorting slash disposal fee minus contamination percentage, cardboard payback minus seventy dollars per ton processing slash pickup, and a hundred dollars per month rental for storage and transfer of broken carts. Number fourteen is resolution approving Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau Board recommendation for funding a mini-grant application by National Dirt Association in the amount of two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. And number fifteen is a resolution approving access agreement between Chamberlain Manufacturing Corporation and the city of Waterloo, Iowa, to allow access onto the old Chamberlain site located at five fifty Esther Street for the purpose of performing all activities required of licensee by the United States Environmental Protection Agency at said property, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Motion's been made with the second. Sandy, can you talk about thirteen, please?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. After reviewing this proposal that they sent to us, we looked over our back records. We have never received a rebate from them for any recycling products. The other contract that we awarded to Wright Environmental included, they bring out a container to the public works facility and take the carts for no cost, the broken carts that we can't fix that aren't any good. So they do that at no cost to us. If there's any recycling, they get that, but that would save us a hundred dollars a month. And we've rewritten the R F P. We've done a little more research, and we think we can get, we're broadening out, so we think we can get better costs coming back.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to rebid this? Is that what I hear you say?
We are, that's on the consent agenda tonight, to set a date of hearing and opening of bids.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number fifteen, just a quick question. Is this more as far as from a standpoint of looking and getting into the Chamberlain site and getting it cleaned up for future development?
Noel or Dave, one of you?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So, as you may recall, the city of Waterloo acquired the Chamberlain site a number of years ago in cooperation with the then-owner Ron Voss to clean up the site. By that, I mean that the city was able to utilize and obtain some federal grants to demolish a lot of the buildings out there. All while that was happening, Chamberlain Manufacturing Company has remained as the responsible entity for actual any contamination on the site. As we've continued to work with them and the EPA towards looking at cleaning up the site, we've taken steps throughout the years. If, as you may recall, we demolished the buildings after a while, as the indications continue to come back as the site is cleaned, we were able to go in and remove footings. We're now to the point where we've removed the majority of the infrastructure out there, but there's still some work to do environmentally. Chamberlain is under EPA order to do that. As a property owner, we have to give them access to get in there and take some of these actions. So that's the step we're at, but it is all towards eventual redevelopment of the site.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. I guess I'm not clear on number thirteen. So if we've rejected the bid, what's our alternative now?
Going to change the scope of the project and rebid it. I was on the consent agenda a little bit earlier.
Okay. I guess if it's on here now, why was it not here as part of the consent agenda or whatever? Put this all together so we all understand. Thank you.
Your name and address for the record, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street.
Gracias. That's my Spanish. You did French, I did Spanish. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.